Get started. Thanks for showing up tonight, everybody.
That's terrible. I don't mean to take you down.
All right. Good evening and welcome to Thursday, September 23rd, 2021 Regular Meeting of City of Xenia, City Council. At this time, we will have an invocation led by Pastor Aaron Schibington. Did I say that right? Okay, cool. He is pastor at Faith Ignited, located here in Xenia. They meet at the Xenia YMCA at 11:07 a.m. every Sunday morning. Followed the invocation will be Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilwoman Rebecca Dean. If you could all please rise. Thank you.
Father, as we gather this evening, we proclaim the eternal truth that you are on the throne still. That there is nothing that has been done or ever will be done that shakes or rattles you. And for this, we give you praise and glory and honor. That there is nothing more true than you, nothing bigger than you, and nothing more loving. So, Father, may we fall on your mercy tonight. We ask for your blessing upon our local leadership. May you help them and enable them and empower them, give them guidance and wisdom to shepherd us. We pray for our national leadership, Father, that you will also guide them. And, Father, we pray for your kingdom come then. And we know that this is a temporary place that will never be set right until you return. For that, we give you thanks and await your coming. A blessing upon all who have gathered in this room, on all who share concerns, and upon all who care for others in a way that glorifies you. So, Father, may we ask the guiding question, what does love require of us? Over and over, that we may reflect your glory. In the name of God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much, Pastor Aaron Schibington, Faith United here in Xenia. And thank you, Councilwoman Dean, for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I will call our meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Branham? Councilman Urschel?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Smith?
Here. At this time, I would like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Branham. He texted me yesterday, a little under the weather. So, prayers for him for fast healing. And I'll accept a second to excuse him. Executed by Councilman Urschel. Any discussion regarding that absence? All right. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the September 9th, 2021 Regular Meeting. At this time, I will accept a motion to enter the minutes into the record, please.
Mr. President, I have a correction.
Okay.
Page six. Spelling of the gentleman's last name is incorrect. Proper spelling is S-H-O-A-T-E-S. That's the proper spelling.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, did you get that?
And with that, a motion to accept.
Okay. You have a motion on the floor by Councilman Scrivens with one correction. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Executed by the mayor. Any other discussion? C9 roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
I'll abstain. I was not at the last meeting.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a special presentation. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Joe Brayden, who is our West Region Representative for Auditor of State, Mr. Keith Faber. Thank you for being here tonight.
It's my honor to be here tonight. And on behalf of Auditor State, Keith Faber, as you said, and it's great to be here to present the City of Xenia with the Auditor State Award with Distinction. Auditor State Keith Faber's office audits nearly 6,000 entities, and less than 4% of these entities are even eligible for this award. So, this puts the City of Xenia in a very select group. You're surrounded by a very select group, actually. I just presented this award to the county just a few days ago. So, they set the bar and everybody else is following along. So, that's awesome for Green County. The Auditor State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meet the following criteria of a clean audit report. The entity must file financial reports with the Auditor State's office by the statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare a CAFER, which is a comprehensive annual financial report. The audit report does not contain any findings for recoveries, no material citations or material weaknesses, any significant deficiencies, uniform guidance or single audit findings, or any question costs. Their management letter must contain no comments related to any ethics referrals, any question costs, any lack of timely annual financial report submission, any bank reconciliation issues, a failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, financial recovery, or any public meetings or public records issues. And the entity shall have no other financial concerns. I'd love to read through all the criteria because it talks a lot about what it takes to get this award. This award represents the hard work of every employee here in the City of Xenia who makes the effort each day to achieve accounting excellence. I want to recognize the mayor, all the council members, for everything that they've done here. And they've done an outstanding job watching over the city's finances here in the City of Xenia. But if Ryan would like to step up here, I would like to specifically recognize Ryan Doof, your Finance Director, for his exceptional commitment to financial integrity. Congratulations, Ryan. On behalf of Ohio Auditor State Keith Faber, I'd like to present the Auditor State Award with Distinction. There you go.
Should get a picture. Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
All right. So, not what I usually use, but...
Michelle's got it.
Oh, you got Michelle? Thanks.
Right. Turn around this way.
He wants to move. We can get out of the way if you want. And I know.
This is you, Ryan.
That work?
Yes.
Exceptional integrity.
That's awesome.
Okay, I got it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So much. That's amazing. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Brayden, thank you so much. On behalf of the City Council and City of Xenia, thank you for your representation here tonight. We are very proud of our finance team here at our city. I've only worked with two finance directors on my term, and I have no issues at all with Mr. Doof. His staff does a great job. Even during COVID, they kept things moving, and we appreciate the job Ryan does. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have anything to say? All right. Moving on. Our next item in the agenda is opportunity for audience comments. So, what I'd like to do is just make a small statement just to let everybody know that during audience comments, council sometimes does ask questions. It is the intent of council. We don't respond during audience comments to questions that are thrown. However, we will certainly try to find answers for you either after the meeting or refer you to the right person of city staff that can answer those questions for you. So, a lot of times, people come, they ask questions, and we just kind of sit there. It's not that we're being rude. It's just not the policy of council to engage or ban or back and forth during audience comments. So, I know a lot of you are here tonight based on what we've heard regarding the plat design for the Hollywood subdivision. That actually, that item is not on the agenda tonight for council action. And I am going to actually defer to our Law Director, Ms. Dinet Fisher, who can certainly speak. Before you come up and ask questions, I thought we would just exchange some information in advance because we certainly appreciate everyone being here. You're still more than welcome to talk, and I would encourage you to do so. However, we wanted to give you the right information from the city's perspective on this project. Ms. Fisher?
Good evening. I'm sorry I couldn't be with you this evening. Just to do a little process, and Mr. Forscher, I know is there in the audience, and he can go into more detail as needed. The process for a PUD, council doesn't have anything formally in front of it yet. The process for this was a change to the PUD under the current Land Development Code, went to a Plan and Zoning Commission for their review. The next step in the process is for the developer to file a plat. Plan Commission will review that plat. They will make a recommendation to council, but the final decision on that plat is council's. So, there is a time for the public to come and engagement council on this development. The problem is, the time just isn't right now. The plat has not been filed. There is nothing formally in front of council yet. Once that plat does get filed, that really would be the most appropriate time for the public to come comment on that. And Mr. Forscher, if you want to add anything that you feel I missed?
Good evening. I'll just add to that that the, you know, the basic, at the first stage in the PUD process, a concept plan is approved. That approves the basic layout and standards for the subdivision. The plat stage is when you get more detailed drawings for the lots and for the streets, the construction drawings and whatnot. That is, that does go to Planning, Zoning Commission, and council. There is not a requirement to send out notification for that. But there, you know, certainly the people are welcome to show up. And the meetings are public meetings. They're not public hearings, but they are public meetings. And it will come back to you at that stage. That's the only thing I wanted to add. I don't know if you heard that or not.
Okay. So, for clarification, what is the timeline? Do we have any right now anticipate the plat drawings to come to planning? And where are we at on that?
No. Right now, we don't know when the developer is going to submit the final plat. Most likely, if he does it, it's going to be for just a phase of development, not any higher development. We know that they're interested in it, but we haven't been given a date as to when they're going to submit that yet.
Okay.
And just to clarify for the public, the developer cannot start building simply because Plan Commission did approve a change to the PUD. A plat is required. Council has to approve that plat, and it has to be recorded with the county before the developer could start moving dirt out there. So, the public will get a chance to comment on this. It's really just a question of timing.
Okay. So, one to three months, three to six months, we don't know.
We don't know.
Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Schirmer?
Just to add that we obviously, you know, development opportunities are good for our community. We want a planned process where we're adding value to our community. To that extent, we want to make this very transparent. I know that Brian's made himself available certainly to the council, to residents. So, as residents would have questions, we encourage you, share those questions, share those concerns with our planning department, with my office as well. We invite that conversation. We want development that's good for the community. I think part of the problem that we've encountered is that there are maybe some misunderstandings about process or what is allowed to be built. And so, I think just sitting down and kind of clarifying what our code says and what the process is is really helpful for folks. So, that is definitely an option that folks can exercise and will accommodate and take some time to sit down and talk with people.
Right. Right. Thank you. So, we wanted to be very transparent tonight because we appreciate everybody being here. You're more than welcome to please come to the podium. But again, council, we've been made aware of your concerns, and many of us on council have already addressed those concerns with city staff and shared some of those concerns as well. So, at this time, I welcome anyone that would like to come to the podium. If you could, for the record, give us your name and address. And because of the size crowd we have, maybe just limit your comments to three or four minutes.
I'm Kathy Priest Peabody. I live at 1801 Harris Lane. My home faces Hollywood Boulevard. And I apologize to my neighbors because I was told that by one of the councilmen that I, we should have all our neighbors here tonight. And so, a lot of our neighbors did show up. So, I apologize to you for misunderstanding. But I have talked to Brian, and I have talked with a couple of you in regards to our concerns. My biggest concern is allow us to have input. I realize you have to do what is best for the community. I realize that. But please allow us that opportunity to give input. We have heard lots and lots of rumors. And so, subsequently, we do want clarification, which is why I spoke with Brian. And so, yes, when the time comes. We have seen a proposed picture, whatever, plan, and are not happy with that, whatever it is. And so, that's why we would like our voices to be heard and whatever that's worth. Yeah. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Keith Morris. I live at 367 Hollywood Boulevard, which is Cathy Corner from Kathy. Adding to what Kathy was saying, what I would like to know is, you know, they're planning all this stuff. When are we allowed to voice our opinion as far as what we would, you know? Of course, the plat's probably going to go through one of these days. Okay? We're not, we're not probably going to be able to stop it. But can we voice what we would like to see happen? Because it's our neighborhood that it's affected. Okay? Some of these people that just has built a house here, bought that house and built it because it was a quiet neighborhood. And I'm telling you, just like they was, I had some folks over talk to me about my driveway. When they open up Hollywood, it's going to be a drag strip. I don't care what any of you guys say. They're not going to go on personnel and drive 35. They're going to stay on Hollywood and run 40 or 50 all the way up to Fairdown Road. That's going to disturb all of us that live in that neighborhood right now. If we was allowed to say something before they plan it, then maybe the people that's planning it say, okay, that's not a bad idea. You know, that way, before they waste all their money making up plans. You know, like, why can't they take Hollywood and bring it around to Sierra? Okay? Keep our plat this way, put the bike path up, and then put the plat back there with two entrances off the Fairgrounds. I mean, that way, our plat's not affected. Our values of our homes is not affected. I mean, I would like to be able to talk to the developer and say, hey, that's what some of the neighbors would like to see. I don't know. Maybe I'm not speaking for all of them. But I bring kids three or four years old, you know, out on my sidewalk all the time. You know, first one of them gets hurt, I'm going to be in trouble. So, you know, that's what I would like to see. You know, let us speak to the people that's trying to develop. You know, until it's too, until it comes time to be too late, you know? Then there's not anything anyone can do. No, it's already planned out now, so that's what I would like to see. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time?
Please come. If you came, seriously, we'd like to hear. So, come on, you guys.
Anyone else? Yeah. Come on up.
Evening, everyone. My name is Gloria Oppenheimer. I live at 1807 Promenade Lane, Xenia. I'm relatively new resident here, about two years. I don't want to say I'm an expert on Ryan Homes, but I lived in one for 45 years. I've had lots of experience with them. I lived in northeastern Ohio until about two and a half years ago. My daughter lived in a Ryan home in Miami'sburg for a number of years. I've been in some of their newer homes in Beaver Creek and so forth. And it's what you can't see. So, I hate to knock Ryan Homes, but like I said, I've been there 45 years. I lived in one of their houses, and I saw what it did to my neighborhood. The thing that bothers me more than anything, and since I've been through this, everything that I've experienced with Ryan Homes, it's all been done ahead of time. And by the time it came out to the public, the decisions have already been made. Now, I was told by a neighbor before I bought this house on Promenade that she knew this family well and owns the farm. And she said, I've been assured more than once they would never, ever do this to us in this neighborhood. So, now, of course, I don't know how far that goes. That lady has since passed away, and so, but it's... Listen, I'm well aware a lot of things go on behind closed doors. We all know that, and anyone that's in politics knows that. And I, for one, was thankful that we had a prayer before this and we pledged allegiance to our flag. I'm a very loyal American citizen. And I would sure hope that, listen, you do what's best for everyone. And I have a question on this, or a comment. I used to work in public education. I would be highly concerned about what something like this would do to the schools as to how much tax dollars they would actually get out of that and what kind of pressure that would put upon the schools. And my question is too, another, I saw where the city lost some residents in the census, maybe 250, close to 300. Where are these people coming from? I mean, I would, I have to look around and say, and like I said, I am new to the area. But my question would be, where are you going to get these families that can afford these homes? These, some of these homes will be relatively small houses. So, it really does make you wonder where you're going to get the people to come in. I mean, the way things are going in the government, none of us will have anything very long. Anyway, do the best you can.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time?
Hi. My name is Anna Maria Walls, and I live at 393 Hollywood Boulevard. And I am one of the new transplants. We built there. We moved from another city. And I don't know a lot about Xenia government yet, and I want to try to learn more. But my main concern is, just like everyone else has stated, when will we be able to be involved in the early process of it? I mean, I've seen it in other places where, oh, yeah, yeah, things are taking time. They're taking time. Next, you know, it's all finished. It's all done, and the community had no input whatsoever. And I'm just hoping that Xenia isn't like that, that they do consider the residents. And just like, you know, my neighbors have said, development is inevitable, and I understand that. But for Xenia, schools to be involved, I think, is very important. The size of these homes are very important. And is there a possibility that we can find out who the voter is? Who's applied for this permit? Or when was it applied for and that kind of thing? And if maybe one person, the city, someone on the city council or somebody could just give a simple phone call to one person in our neighborhood, we'll all get the message, and we'll all be here because we're all concerned. And so, that's just what I'd like to know. If someone could maybe contact one person to say... Because, I mean, we could show up at every monthly meeting for six months, and in one month, if nothing happens, we don't show up. And, you know, that's not fair to us because we all want to be involved. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time?
I guess this is more for her. I'm Karen Jackson, and I live at 2219 Carousel Drive. And I've lived in Xenia for, I've lived in Xenia for a year. I moved away for 20 years and came back. So, I understand that Xenia needs to grow and develop. And I guess I'm a little concerned. You kept saying that...
Okay. Madam, Madam Law Director? Okay. I think she has a question for you. Okay. So, go ahead, ma'am. She should be able to hear you.
Okay. I guess I'm a little confused because these are some drawings that we got. And you had said that the drawings haven't been solidified? And that she mentioned a PUD. I'm sorry. I don't know what a PUD, what that means.
Well, I'll address it a little bit. I can't see the drawings, so Mr. Forscher will probably need to step in. So, the neighbors are aware, this entire development was initially approved back in 2006. City Council at that time approved a PUD. That's called a Planned Unit Development. The reason that it came back in front of the city is the developer proposed a change. Had the developer decided to build what had been approved back in 2006, if he had built it or decided to proceed with that plan as it was already approved, we wouldn't be having any conversations. We are able to talk about what is going to happen because they did apply for that change. I don't know what the, what drawings, I can't see what drawings we have. The current Land Development Code, our current zoning code, states that this type of change to a Planned Unit Development that was proposed goes only to Planning Commission. But having that change approved is only the first step. Council has the final say because council approves or disapproves the final plat. And that's really the point for council to engage on this and engage with the public once that plat is formally before you. You don't have anything before you right now. The plat and the PUD might look a little different. I know they're doing traffic studies. That could end up changing things. So, Brian, if you, if you can see what drawings she has and maybe add anything I've missed?
Well, what I would suggest is that I'm happy, and I've already done it. I'm happy to meet individually with people and go over in detail what's planned and what the status is. This probably isn't the best forum for doing that, but I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting or meet with you in person at your house, wherever, and go over that more in detail if you want.
Okay. We went to the county commissioners' meeting a few months ago, and they told us to come here. So, I'm sorry. This is not our area of expertise.
Yeah. No, and that's why I encourage people, call me. I can give you my number. I'm happy to talk to you about and fill you in on all the details and hopefully weigh some of your concerns.
Because right now, where I live, there's a, you know, the cornfield. And what we were told is the building was going to start because they've already put the stakes in and done the survey. And there's little stakes out in the area, like behind my home. So, I guess I'm a little confused.
Okay. Do you want me to, what do you want me to do? Yeah, I would suggest if we could rest us after the meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
You want me to talk about it now?
Yeah. Yeah. I think we can, are you willing, ma'am, do you want to stay this evening? We can have staff here to answer questions. Our agenda was relatively short tonight. I don't expect our meeting to go very... I don't expect our meeting to go very long. So you're more than welcome to stay. I would suggest that.
My colleagues are saying yes, so...
Sure, sure. Do you have anything else that you'd like to bring up tonight?
No, I think, you know, because like I said, there are stakes in the grounds. They've been surveyed. We were told that once the corn is picked, that they're going to start building. So that's why I think we're a little confused.
Yeah, first, we've heard that, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Excuse me, I will ditto to that, that we were told as soon as the corn was picked, they were moving, taking Hollywood all the way through.
Amazing.
Speaking of...
Yes.
Question. Didn't she just say that it was approved back in 2006?
Okay, so...
That you guys were here.
Yeah, so, Ms. Fisher, do you want to back up to 2006, what happened there and how we got to this point, based on our land development code? Or Mr. Fisher, would you like to address that?
Mr. Fisher may have to address this more than I because I didn't start till 2017, and our current land development code was adopted in 2016. But my understanding is that this particular development, the planned unit development, was approved by the city in 2006. Of course, we had a recession hit in 2007. Everybody pretty much stopped building everything. The developer had decided to restart the development. Rather than following what was already approved, he came to planning commission asking for a change in the PUD. Planning commission did allow that. It didn't change the lot sizes. It did allow for smaller homes. The next step in that process, now, of course, if he's going to change the PUD, he's got to change the plat, and council would then have to review. But Mr. Fisher can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that this original development was approved by the city in 2006.
Okay. So let me... A plan... First of all, there's a couple sets of regulations, zoning and subdivision. Zoning regulations basically tell you how you're allowed to use your property, how you're allowed to use an individual lot. Subdivision regulations tell you how you're allowed to chop that lot into several smaller lots. There's a couple of different types of zoning. Conventional zoning, which is where all the rules are predefined on what your setbacks are, what your square footages are. The other is planned unit development, PUD. PUD is a more flexible type of zoning where essentially there's a negotiation between the city and the developer on what the standards are going to be for that development. The Miller property is a PUD. It's that type of zoning. To create a PUD, first you have to go through a rezoning process. A rezoning process is a process where we send notices out to everybody within three hundred feet. There's a public hearing with planning zoning commission and council. For this property, that happened back in 2006. The property at the time was zoned a mix of commercial and multifamily and single-family. It was rezoned to a PUD, a planned unit development, for one hundred sixty-two lots. So, and it included extending Hollywood through to connect with Fairground Road as well as the extension of several other streets. That preliminary plan was approved in 2006. Now, more recently... And now, only a couple of sections of that were built. One hundred sixty-two lots are remaining. Then, as Ms. Fisher mentioned, the housing economy bottomed out. We had a wall. We didn't see a lot of activity. More recently, a developer designed homes has come to the city and said, "We're interested in this property. We'd like to build, but we'd like to make a few tweaks." And the way our code is written, that if you want to make some tweaks to the PUD plan and you're not increasing the number of units, this developer does not want to build any more units than what was previously approved. The way our code is written, that plan can be presented to planning zoning commission, and planning zoning commission can decide on it. So that... So the developer tweaked the plan. The smallest lot size was reduced. The revised plan, which I'm happy to share with anyone who's interested, has a range of lot sizes. It's the same number of lots that was previously approved. Some of the individual lots will be smaller than what was previously proposed. In return for that, there will be increased amount of common area open space, including a buffer between the existing development and the new development. The home sizes will be... The minimum square footage will be fourteen hundred square feet. And that's just the minimum. Doesn't mean every home is going to be built that size. That's just the minimum. And that's what's been approved, and on a preliminary basis. The next step, again, will be for the developer to develop detailed plans for the lots and for the streets and the infrastructure and come back to you with a final plat for one of the sections. So that... That's... Hopefully clears up the 2006 versus now. That the public involvement process that you typically see with the initial creation of a PUD and a rezoning, that happened back in 2006. So that plan is already... Has been in place since then. All that's happening now is they tweak the plan to make some of the individual lots smaller, increase the open space. And they... The street plan was modified somewhat, too, but the notion of Hollywood going through, that was already approved, and that's in the new plan as well. So hopefully that clears some of it up and supplements it.
Excuse me, I have a question. Would that be said, didn't... Isn't... Is it the same developer or is it a different developer?
It's a different developer.
That's why... So that's why they've got a different PUD? Is that what you're saying? Because this guy wants to do things differently than the other developer?
What I'd suggest, Mr. Mars, if you could just stick around and address these with Mr. Fisher after the meeting?
Okay.
Then we can get your questions answered one-on-one. So we're still in audience comments. So if anyone else here has not had that opportunity to come to the podium, please do so.
Thanks for taking our comments. My name is Marty Larson. I live at 2228 Sierra Trail. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to bring up. One is the fifteen years since the original PUD was approved. You know, we've gone through several different... At least a different owner that I know of. It doesn't... And the economy's changed. You know, things have changed. And so I would challenge the council to really look at that rule and see if there's something that can be... It can't be done now, probably, but there could be something in the future that needs to be talked about as far as there's something grandfathered in. What is the term limit? What is the limit? And how far can that go out? The other thing is when we talk about the size of the houses, you know, when I just built... I mean, I've got a million-dollar view, right? Right across the field, I see a masterpiece every night of a sunset. And when I talk to the Millers, one of the things that they said is, "We're not going to sell unless we have... Unless we have to." Well, I know that selling prices aren't as high as they've ever been. Corn prices are as high as they've ever been. Now, land prices aren't as high as they've ever been, too, right? So I get the economics of it, but they also told me that they would not be selling. And then the third thing is when we talk about the development, recognizing that none of us altogether are as collectively... Will not be happy. But to be able to hear our comments and to take them into consideration, whether it's been approved or not back in 2006, and how does it impact us today? And the fourth thing, on a personal note, is I look at working outside of Xenia, Ohio. If we really want economic growth in Xenia, Ohio, and we want to have higher wage workers coming into Xenia looking at the tax law as is, I get a percent... Well, I probably get dinged by a percent of my income every year. Well, that's going to keep people out of Xenia. I've been in Xenia since I was four years old. I'm not leaving anytime soon unless I move because of development. But just from a... You know, something to look at in the future as well is the tax law and really understanding what that's doing to having people coming... Come in, higher incomes coming into Xenia. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just to round out, if the folks have been commenting, I just want to put a shameless plug in. We've had a number of folks tonight that have talked about maybe being new to the process in Xenia or new to Xenia. We host annually, at least once annually, what we call our Citizens Academy. In fact, we have an alum... Alumni of that, and Nancy here in the audience, and she can speak to what we do. But we take an opportunity over six meetings. To anybody who's interested, we host them here on this building from the public, and we sit down and we talk about what Home Rule is, how our charter works, how our council and staff, how our governance works. We talk about the police division, their operations. Take a visit there. We talk about the planning and zoning process. We talk about development. We kind of take an over... High-level view, but get hands-on in terms of how we interact with the public. So Citizens Academy, it's free and open to the public. We don't have that scheduled, our next one yet, but please look forward to that opportunity if you want to learn more about your local government, about the process. We want you to be here. We want you to be engaged. We want you to understand, and we want you to realize that we want to be transparent and all of that so you understand these proceedings. So just keep it in mind. Again, shameless plug for that opportunity, but it's just another step that we take to try to be open and accessible to our public.
All right, thank you. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time?
I will say this, that I think I'm the only one that's lived here before 2006. I purchased my home in 2002. And while I was teaching at the university at that point in time, so if there was notification that there was a meeting about a 2006 change, my bad, I didn't know about it. And I'll take full credit for that. But when I purchased my home in 2002, I was told that Hollywood would not go all the way through to Fairgrounds but would intertwine through the development. We know that the development's coming. But that is what, historically, I had heard. And... But I don't have any of that in writing. So it's just what I was told when I purchased the home. So, anyway.
All right, thank you.
I'm done. I promise I won't say anymore.
Okay, you're fine. So anyone else care to comment? Normally, I'll be quite candid. We're usually not this relaxed or engaged back. I feel the importance of this tonight and certainly appreciate everyone's time. Someone asked, you know, how do we get informed? How do we know? Our city posts the agenda of all our commissions on our city's website. I would encourage everyone to look at that website and click the Planning and Zoning Commission Meetings notes for the agenda. And if I'm wrong, Ms. Johnson, correct me. Planning and zoning is chaired by Councilman Branum. He's not here tonight due to his illness. But they meet the first Thursday of every month here at six o'clock. Planning and zoning is comprised of residents in our city that have lived in the city for at least two years, and they are volunteers. They... It's unpaid position. However, you are more than welcome to attend those meetings. There's an opportunity for audience comments at every planning and zoning meeting. And normally, a lot of developers do come to those meetings to engage the planning and zoning in case there's questions. So that might be your opportunity to talk to them as well. Anyone else on council have anything else to add? All right. Okay. So we're going to move on at this time. We have no oil business scheduled for tonight. Nor do we have a public hearing. Our first item in new businesses, Resolution 2021, letter KK, titled "An Emergency Authorizing a Then-And-Now Payment of $4,188 to Vista Solutions Group for Document Imaging for the Xenia Municipal Court." Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Council President. This is an invoice that's actually from quite a long time ago. I'm not sure why the vendor let this invoice slip through the cracks for such a long period of time. But apparently, right around the time that there was a transition in the municipal court administration, there was some confusion about this particular invoice. The dollars for this invoice were actually encumbered at the time, but then they were spent on other expenses with the same exact vendor. And so as the finance department recently became aware of this outstanding invoice, we discovered that there aren't sufficient dollars encumbered today. Now, there is sufficient money available in the budget, and there was sufficient money available at the time that the purchase was made. But the way that state law works for purchasing, when the dollars are not available on that PO at the time they receive the invoice, then we have to do a then-and-now statement, which basically says the money was available when it was purchased and it's still available now. When that then-and-now statement exceeds $3,000, we are required to bring it back to the city council for them to pass a resolution approving payment of that then-and-now. This is a legitimate invoice that's been outstanding for some time. We'd like to make good on payment. And so we're requesting tonight that council authorize a resolution approving payment on the then-and-now statement in an amount totaling $4,188 and eighty-six cents. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to move the authorization of the then-and-now payment?
Absolutely.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would just add that, Ryan, if you need to prove this or the auditor's going to take the award back. No, I just... Just to reiterate with Ryan, sometimes some of these things slip through the crack, in particular with... Through the cracks in particular with the court. So it's just a housekeeping matter.
We understand.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Due or not paying when it was due, was there any interest and penalty involved?
I don't believe there's any penalty or interest included in this particular payment, no.
All right, thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Our next item, Resolution 2021, dash letter LL, is an introduction. This is providing for assessments to be levied and authorizing the finance director to certify those assessments to the Greene County Auditor. Mr. Duke, would you care to explain?
Yes, thank you, Council President. There are several occasions throughout the course of the year that the finance department will request that council approve a resolution assessing various fees to properties. Typically, it's for things like outstanding weed mowing invoices, some demolition that we may have had to do, or utilities that are left unpaid. This is the second request we've made this year for assessments to be made to various properties. We're requesting tonight that assessments be levied in a total of $107,193.75 for weed mowing, $6,840 for trash cleanup, and $609.99 for demolition. If anyone would like additional information on the details of those assessments that are available on the financial talks.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Duke? If not, I'll ask for an introduction. By Councilman Urschel, thank you. Our next item is an administrative motion changing the November 11th and November 25th meetings and the December 23rd regular council meetings. These are due to conflicts with our scheduled holidays. Mr. Mayor, would you care to explain?
Yes, sir, thank you. As councils are aware, our staff maintains a legislative planning calendar for the purpose of scheduling legislation and events for council, and we do so really months in advance of scheduling legislation and events for council, and we do so really months in advance when you see those agendas published. And looking ahead through the fall, we realize that not only is there the annual meeting conflict with Thanksgiving, but uniquely this year, Veterans Day falls on a council meeting date. And as well, council's established a half-day holiday, which because of the timing of things, will fall on December 23rd, which is also a scheduled meeting date. So in order for us to plan appropriately, the legislative actions and any other presentations that we might have forthcoming, we are recommending that council move forward with an administrative motion and approve of that motion that would adjust those meetings as follows. We would move the 11th of November meeting to the 9th of November, that's a Tuesday, at 6:00 PM. November 25th, which would be Thanksgiving, would be moved to the 23rd, again at 6:00 PM. And the December 23rd meeting would be moved back to Wednesday, December 29th, again at 6:00 PM. The purpose for moving that last one back is it gives us a little bit more time before that final schedule of bills and reconciling everything for the end of the year, finance-wise. But again, getting these published now will give the public sufficient notice to be aware, and again, allow us to, to plan out your agendas moving forward.
Okay, that, December 29th, is that five or six?
That should be five, right? I think, I think I misspoke.
Okay, awesome. All right, I'll introduce, or I'm sorry, I will ask for a motion to accept these changes?
So moved.
Okay, moved by the vice president, seconded by the mayor. Any further discussion? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you for opening those dates up. Our next item, item four in administrative motion, is approving the schedule of bills tonight. Mr. Finance Director, what do you have for us?
I just note that a large portion of the scheduled bills this evening is related to the brick projects over on South Columbus Street, which is a grant project which will be reimbursed for. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have on the bills.
Okay, thank you. Before we ask for questions, I'll accept a motion to pay the bills.
Salute.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Any questions for Mr. Duke? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is appointed officials' reports. I'll start first with Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Council President. I know Mr. Braden has, has taken off, I think he has a fairly lengthy drive this evening, but I want to thank the auditor's state's office for presenting the award this evening. I think he did a good job of explaining that, that there's a lot that goes into this citywide, and it really speaks to the, the great job that not only the finance department does, but all the departments across the city do in being compliant with all the various rules and regulations. And so, I'm excited to, to receive this, and I think it's a testament to the great job that our staff does across the city. That's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duke. Congratulations. Anyone have anything for Mr. Duke tonight? Yeah, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to compliment the finance department and how you regulate all of the other entities that flow the information back to you. It's not just a one-man thing, and it's everybody that's involved. So I just want to compliment you, and not only you, but the city is, has a tradition of maintaining financial excellence. I've been around since '06, I've been sitting out in the audience. And I remember Mr. Freeman received a number of them, and then Mr. Basilak, and now you. So you guys are maintaining a very fine tradition of every penny being accounted for, so we thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens? Anyone else? All right, thank you. Try and plug along for courtesy of our guests here. Ms., Madam Law Director?
I'm in communication with her. She, we, the Zoom link keeps dropping, so she's indicated she has no report.
Oh, there she is. If you can hear us?
She has no audio.
She cannot hear us, okay. So we'll, we'll pass on her, and we'll go to Mr. Mayorman. Thank you. Mr. City Major?
My stuff's more exciting anyway than hers, so. I just have two announcements tonight. It's that fall season, fall's arrived, it feels like it literally turned overnight here this week. We have two activities coming up that we want to make public aware of, so that they can participate. First, we have, coming up on October 9th, the Xenia Oktoberfest, and this is a, this is a community program that's being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with Devil One's Brewery, and the city is helping to facilitate this event. This will be a live music event, food trucks, we are having some, some Oktoberfest beer sales that will occur on South Detroit on October 9th. We have two stages, so they will have two stages with live music from noon until 10:00 PM. Acts from around the region, they've got some great acts lined up, some great food services available over there. So we're excited to provide this opportunity for our adult community to have a unique activity in Xenia. Again, October 9th, we encourage folks to come out and participate here in downtown from noon until 10:00 PM. And then, for family activities, we have a new activity this season that we are launching and trying out, and this is called Harvest on Main. This is scheduled for October 16th, which is the, the following Saturday after the Oktoberfest. This is scheduled from 2:00 to 7:00 PM, again here in downtown. Not ironically located on Main Street here in downtown. We have all kinds of family-oriented activities, including the farmer's market, we'll have children's games, a straw maze, photo booth with antique tractors, petting zoo, pie eating contest, food trucks in town square, we have a number of giveaways and activities that we're working on sponsorships with local individuals and businesses. So again, just a real rich family environment, encouraging folks to come out and participate in that activity. If that's successful, that's something we'd like to replicate into the future. A lot of folks who are partnering. There's also a unique element that'll be in partnership with 68 Toys, Rob, the owner there, they will have, located on the west side of Detroit Street, a series of Halloween-themed activities and vendors. 68 Toys is a great local business downtown here, and they've been fantastic in partnering with special events downtown, so we want to give a plug for that component that will occur simultaneously with the rest of this, and that'll be on the stretch on South Detroit. And the mayor's motioning to me that she has something to add.
Well, I was just going to say, Becky at Flower Bakery has set up over 40 vendors, craft vendors, so I want to make sure you know that this part of Main Street will have a lot of vendors that usually are all out at the fairgrounds, but we're going to have them here in town.
And we should clarify, I said farmer's market, but it's a craft fair in farmer's market, and there's some, some, some very, very fine handcrafted goods that'll be there.
And then what they're doing with the toy store, there's an adult costume contest with a $200 cash prize, and then there's the under 12 costume contest with a $50 cash prize, and they're going to be going from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM with extended hours, so in conjunction with all of this. Thank you, sorry.
So again, we're just proud to host some activities, and hopefully these will provide some unique experiences, family oriented experiences, particularly there on the 16th. We encourage folks to come out and participate, and that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone have anything for the city manager tonight?
Do we have an event on the 28th as well?
Oh, yes, we, thank you, my mermas. We do have our last neighborhood night out of the season, that'll be, excuse me, September 28th, so that's next Tuesday. This will be over at Lexington Park, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. We have, I think, about 200 box lunches, suppers for the first 200 folks, working in partnership with One Bistro. We're proud to have most of that meal covered by donations, which is fantastic for our community. It is our, our deep desire, I know it's council's desire and intent, to be able to engage with the community in Lexington, that Lexington Park area, to talk about the future of the park, the future of the neighborhood. So we'll have some opportunities for some, some conversation out there. Xenia PD will have a presence with their dare truck, but we will have a large contingent from the Xenia Fire Division, I think if they're bringing the ladder truck out, their zone, or their drone equipment, to do some simulations and setup, and help folks understand the nature of their services and be hands-on with those, the equipment and, and the staff. So again, we encourage folks from that neighborhood or beyond, if you're interested, come out next Tuesday, September 28th, Neighborhood Night Out, Lexington Park.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is reports of board and commissions, and up is Councilman Urschel regarding Economic Development Advisory Board.
Great, we're in a transition mode with that group because we're combining it with the Tax and Centour Review Board as well, and we don't have a legislate, legislation completed on that, but I didn't want to keep our group from meeting while, while that was pending, so we're, we're looking at that to, transition to a standing committee-type flavor that we have, under our, our new rules for our new standing committees, we added two council members to that, so Councilman Dean and the mayor are joining us now and being part of that. And we're also looking to transition this, historically, if you look back over time, there's been a lot of use of this board as a forum for community folks to, advisory from a, from a, what I would call a tactical perspective from development, so we would bring specific development discussions there and get some feedback from folks on that. And I'm looking to transition this to more of what I would call strategic board, to start looking at what is our economic development strategy for the city, and what are some key components of that, and, and setting up some, some grading criteria on that, so we can get some feedback in terms of how we are actually doing on those criteria. We also talked about the fact that we want to make this a key component of our, of the X Plan. That was approved, you know, what was the year, Brian?
13.
13. Yeah, and so that's, we, we talked about the fact that needs to be updated, and we want the Economic Development Advisory Board to be a key component of that, portion of that, and make sure that that board can participate in what we're laying out for the, for the economic and development portion of the plan, and then also track that through as well too. And just to let you know, we also have a, a member of the, the Xenia Community Schools sits on that board with us, and we talked about the fact that we want to have a much more active engagement with the schools and on economic development, and that would address both their side of the equation as well as ours. There too, and looking forward to closer partnering with them with the schools, so, yep.
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything for Councilman Urschel regarding E-Dep? All right, so at this time, we'll move to council comments. Councilwoman Dean, do you have anything tonight?
No, just looking forward to seeing everybody at Lexington Park for next Tuesday.
Thank you very much. And that's 6:00 to 8:00, or 5:00 to 7:00?
5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00. All right, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be extremely brief here tonight. Just want to say congratulations to the 2021 Xenia High School homecoming queen and king, Mr. Trey Sean Hoskins and Ms. Braylee Dixon. So congratulations to both of them. And as you know, the Xenia Buccaneers are 4-1. They're currently playing, as we speak, in Tip City against Tippecanoe, so haven't checked max preps yet to check the score, but we want to wish the Bucks, go Bucks. Then we want to express condolences to the family of Mr. Norton Dorn. He's a 1970, a 1966 graduate of Xenia High School, and condolences to his wife and Ms. Nancy Sexton Dorn. And Norton was one of my classmates. He was inducted into the Xenia Athletic Hall of Fame in 2014. So usually seeing that the poll is casting his vote in person, so, but now he's casting his vote with the men upstairs, so, Norton, God bless you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone have anything for Councilman Scrivens? All right, thank you. Councilman Urschel?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So I, I just want to tell everybody, thanks for coming out tonight. I know if you're just a normal citizen in the city, you have very little interaction with our city code, normally. And, and that's probably a good thing, because you like the city to run without you having to, to be, have a master's degree in, in how the, the code is written and how the policies are worked. But I've spoken with a couple of folks from the development out there, and I guess I'd just say that I believe we follow the current land development code as it's been laid out. Now, I'm not saying that that's, there aren't changes that need to happen to the code. And Marty brought up one of them, as, as, as developments are approved, usually there's a timeline to say if you haven't started executing on that development within a certain time period, that, that those approvals expire, and they, they vary from what's in our standard code to planned unit developments. But there's a, there's a caveat in there, that if you, if you initiate the development, there's no end to the approval of the development. So as, as, and, and you need to know that this isn't the only planned unit development. I don't know, Brian, we, we have six or seven planned unit, I don't know, in, in the city. Like Sapporo Estates is one, Sterling Green is one, there's a number of planned unit developments. And my, my concern is that, just as Marty voiced, is that when, when we have those approvals, there's, there's no, there's no expiration date. So as, as Madam Law Director mentioned, if they went with the, with the baseline approval, 100 years from now, they could continue on with not bringing that to anybody. And I don't think that's a healthy way to do business. So I'm, I'm going to be doing some, some additional research and probably bringing forward some recommended changes in terms of some of those timeline areas. And once again, no one's doing this, trying to hide anything from anybody or do those kind of things, we're just following the law. But as, as we know, there's some unintended consequences to all laws, and I don't think anybody dreamed back when, when the initial plan was done in 2006 that we'd be here in 2021, still doing development for that baseline. Nobody saw what was happening in 2008 with the economy and the crash and those kind of things. But I, I think we do need to address that. The other thing is, for the, the current land development code, you can, you can go online and that's published, and so anybody can go in, if you're residential R1, R2, R3, or industrial or commercial, whatever those are, those are online. If you're, if you're living in a planned unit development, realize your zoning is, is what has been approved within that planned unit development, and that's not available to you online. Now, you can go to Brian and get a copy of that, but I also believe that we, we need to look into how we would make that available to folks, because, you know, I live in R1 area of town, south of town, and I can go and I can find all the, all the, all the zoning that's been approved for that, but if you're in any one of these, and realize all PUDs are peculiar, so note, what's been approved in any PUD is not common to any other one. And I think we need to have a little more transparency in terms of how those are posted, so folks can understand that. And then the third thing is, you know, our current code, as we mentioned, the developer can come in and make some modifications, and there's a determination whether that's a minor or a major modification. And I think we need to have some, so once again, I, I believe we follow the process as it's laid out, and, and it was determined that that was a minor modification. When that happens, there's no public hearings, there is a notification within the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the Planning and Zoning Commission can approve a minor modification to the PUD, and that doesn't come back to us as the council in terms of that change. And as I looked at what was approved there, I, I personally had some concerns that those are, the modifications that were made, in my mind, were major modifications, and probably should have come back to us to council even at the beginning of this process, and we should have had a public hearing. That was not required by our current code and the current definition of what a minor and a major is. So I think there's a lessons learned here that we probably need to go back and have some agreement with our current council, whether we agree that these, do we, do we need to have public hearings and, and discussions with that? I, I believe we do, and so I'm going to be bringing forward some recommended changes to that. But having said that, we're, we're proceeding with the process with the existing law, okay? And the developer came with good, you know, with good intent, and he's, he's complied with the existing law. And, and Brian has complied with our law, and, and so has our Planning and Zoning Commission as well too. So I, I think where we're at right now is that our input, just like your input out there in the public, is going to be when those final plans come. I mean, that's really our, our next point of engagement from the council perspective, but I, I think we need to get a lot of feedback from you folks that are living there. And, and for better or worse, the developer may, may, we may come back and say, no, we don't agree with him, right? And he's, and, and you're right, I, I think he may have spent some money at that point to put together some more detailed plans and surveys and all those kind of things, but we may go back and say, no, we, we just, we don't agree with that, and you, you need to step back. Once again, it's going to take a certain number of folks on council to, to make that determination, you know, at that point. But I, I do believe we need to have more of a public hearing and, and feedback from you folks, so I'm going to be working to make sure that we have some forums for you folks to, to engage with us at that point. So, so the law is what the law is, and we follow the law, and there's, there's, I just want to let you know, there's nobody who's tried to bypass any of the processes or done those kind of things. We've done, you know, everybody's done the best of what, what they, what they need to be doing, and it's stood up to that. I know some of you folks have been caught off guard by that, and so I, I think we've maybe had some lessons learned, and some of this is just, once again, I don't think anybody ever anticipated some of these developments would take 20 years to develop out, right? But, but due to the economy, that's happened, so we've learned some things in terms of how we may need to go back and revise those. But I think we also have heard from a lot of you that, that you've got some, some very significant concerns with some of the changes. I'm going to give you some forums to do that, and I'm going to be listening, and I'm sure the rest of the council will as well too. I just want to thank you for coming tonight and being part of this. And once again, Brian is wide open, if anybody wants to have some discussions about how our current process is, what the baseline PUD is, so you, if you're living out of that area, you are living in a PUD right now, you may not even know that, right? And so he can, he can help you understand what your PUD is, what the, what the zoning regulations are for your PUD that you live in right now, so you can understand that as well too. One other comment, we, we'd had some discussions, a number of us on council, about the, the last home football game, and we had some cars towed, and a lot of folks were up in arms and angry at, you know?
We did not.
Goodwill.
We.
Oh, no, we, we weren't up in arms.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that's right. We had, folks were up in arms that went to the last football game about why are cars being towed, and, you know, let's boycott Goodwill and all that kind of stuff. So I just want to let you know, we went out and had, we, council, a couple of us, had some discussions with folks at, out there at the Xenia Plaza area out there. And just to let you know, they, they had some valid concerns. They're just business folks, and folks had parked behind their employees, and employees couldn't go home. They've been working there since 7:00 AM, and there's no way for them to leave. And they'd made some requests for folks to move their cars, and that didn't happen. And so at the end of the day, they had no other recourse but to have some cars towed. But we did go out and go over that, and we proposed some ways to cone off some of the areas there in the plaza. And so the city did that, and we got the areas coned off. I think it worked a lot better this last time. And we also did some patrolling of the plaza, just to make sure people weren't double parking in front of other places. And so I think the businesses were a lot happier, and the folks that were coming to the game were happier than we were having the cars towed, and we're planning to continue doing that for the rest of the home games. And so I think that's gonna work out well for all of us, too. So, yeah, that's the only two things I had to comment on tonight.
All right, thank you. Mayor Mays?
Thank you, sir. Just like Councilman Urschel said, thank you all for coming out. It is very much appreciated. We want community involvement, and we want to hear from people, and it's, it's not often we get people who actually come and make comments. So thank you, thank you for taking time out of your evening, and we do appreciate hearing from people. Also, of course, want to congratulate Mr. Duke and his staff for their award this evening. That was fantastic, and it's, it's, we pride ourselves on transparency. You hear that word a lot tonight when it comes to the process, but that's the same with our finances, and this is just another way that we show that. So thank you, sir, for your work. A couple of things, I had an opportunity to attend the Juvenile Assessment and Intervention Center. They did a big open house on the 10th of September. Judge Lewis gave a great speech about that. Governor Dewine was there, had an opportunity to go to the open house and see what they're doing out there with, with the juvenile court system and some intervention that they're working on. And just really excited about that process, that they're trying to see things go a lot better for these young people and intervene a lot sooner. So great job for them. That same day, we had, I had an opportunity to help celebrate, two local radio stations had a concert that same night on the 10th, celebrating 60 years of being on the radio, 93.7 and 100.7. So I just want to congratulate Strong Tower Media for being here in our community and having 60 years of being on the radio. We had a great couple of days with the Shret process, and just wanted to thank, again, our city staff. We had a lot of community involvement, people coming out and giving input as we continued to push forward with Xenia Town Square and looking for ways to work with the Dillon Development people. And Larry Dillon, their team did a great job of helping us see what can actually happen there. And I gotta tell you, a lot of us are excited, and things are moving forward, really, just, I think we're all really excited about the future of that development. On the 21st of September, we had an opportunity, I say we, the Xenia Area Association of Churches and Ministries, along with the African-American Ministerial Alliance, had dinner together. And a lot of the local churches and ministries in Xenia sat down and shared a meal together and talked about ways that we are all working to serve this community, and ways that we're trying to work together. We talked about ways to serve with Harvest on Main and work with the city and be a blessing to the city. So wanted to thank the people who put that on, and seeing all of the, not all, but a lot of the faith-based community come together and have a meal and discuss how to love this community well is really encouraging. A couple of things to note, the toy show that the Vintage Toy Store puts on at the fairgrounds is October 2nd. They are actually at capacity with, well, just a little over 600 vendors from 19 states coming. It is an amazing show. If you haven't been, you absolutely need to go. Every single space at the fairgrounds is used, and I know our family loves it. It is every type of toy you can think of. It's just, it's a lot of fun to walk through and support local business. So just wanted to congratulate Rob and Danielle for just, they just knock it out of the park and having all of these vendors come in. That same day, there's an opportunity to participate in SOS Ministries. They're doing a great fundraiser out at Rural King between 10:00 and 3:00. That same night, Jeremiah Tree is having a gala. They're gonna be doing a gala called Rooted in Hope out at Waddell Pedal Farms. So if you are interested in any of these, I'll be there. I'm looking forward to reporting back about all of these different things. But there's still an opportunity to get involved if you're interested. You know what, I'll skip the rest, because we're short on time, so, thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Vice President?
I don't have anything else to add tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would encourage those that are watching to attend Neighborhood Night Out, September 28th. We moved that from Sterling Green, no, I'm sorry, we moved it from my park?
Spring Hill.
Spring Hill to Lexington, because council's kind of at a crossroads here. We've got to decide if we're making investments on Lexington Park, and if we are, we want that community feedback on how to spend dollars that could become available to invest in Lexington Park. And I encourage those to please come out and take a look and give us your input. So I did misspeak tonight that our meeting would be short. It is, and we are at the end of the agenda. We have no executive session for tonight. However, we do have a work session scheduled. Mr. City Manager, how long do you anticipate that to be?
I can try to be brief. We, so we're doing just an overview of the state of the city, which we will formally publish in a couple of weeks. So that's probably gonna be 15 to 20 minutes, then we have just a brief overview of our privacy.
So 15, 20 minutes. So what I'd like to do, I think we need a recess. I'd like to take a five-minute recess. If Mr. Fortner is willing to do this, I would like, if anyone would like to talk to him during this recess, because we are gonna come back and we'll need the room to be quiet for the work session, you're welcome to stay for that and then talk to us afterwards. But can we open the conference room with Mr. Fortner? If anyone, are you okay with that, Brian?
I'm sorry?
If we open the conference room after this, well, big recess, so if anyone has any questions for you, they can take, talk to you. Okay, because at this point, we pretty much established that we're in limbo on this project. So I will take a five-minute recess. When we come back from our recess, the rest of the meeting will not be televised, as we are not planning to do any voting on anything for the city at that time. So thank you for watching, and we'll see you in a few.